All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Monday, April 8th, 2024, 10:04 a.m. My name is Ty Manzouk, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Fortner. In the room we have Commissioner Edwards, Swharles County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers, Robin Campbell and Rob Gilder. We have Jenica Machado from Economic Development Council, on Zoom, Commissioners Klaus and Mahia. And we have two hours for a couple different topics. First up is Experience Olympia and Beyond Overview and Update. And that Piz from Experience Olympia and Beyond is here to give us that presentation. Anything county managers that I would need to set up? Okay, and that floor is yours.
Okay, so thanks so much for letting me be here today. I'm excited to meet you. Welcome. What I put together is really what I'm calling Tourism 101, kind of really getting into the weeds in a way we haven't before, talking about what our organization does and how we work with other organizations in the community. So my hope is that I get through this beast of a presentation and that you not...
Jenica, you want to hit the share button? Otherwise, folks don't...
And that folks not feel like they have to wait until the end to ask questions or share feedback.
Okay.
And I will wait for you guys. Ta-da. Okay. So I'm glad I brought a copy since my presentation is behind me. So the first thing... Oh, there we go, is this is the bucket list of stuff we're gonna cover. So hold on to your hats, there'll be a few things. Before we start talking though, I want to just give you an example of the work that we have been doing in the last year. And I'm hoping that just clicking it...
This is your open invitation to explore the Olympia region. Come discover local creators taking craftsmanship to a whole new level. Connect with our creative community. Driven to tread along untraveled trails in the pursuit of creating something extraordinary. Something that defies convention. A craft that's nothing short of a singular experience. Here in the Olympia region, each of us harbors an unparalleled narrative within. A tale that demands to be told. It takes audacity. The audacity to transcend the anticipated. To reach for the untouched, the unexplored. Come share our adventure as we pour our essence, our sweat and tears, our stolen moments and hard-earned treasures into a dream that has beckoned us for as long as we can remember.
Who's making those raviolis?
That's basilica.
This is a glimpse. A flicker in the vast tapestry of creative expression you'll find here in Olympia and beyond. This is your open invitation to delve into the artistry that resides in these corners of the South Puget Sound. Waiting for you to discover it.
So hopefully you will have noticed that we are really trying to make a point to not only show Olympia proper. It's one of the things that we've really heard loud and clear over the last couple of years since I've been here is, you know, we are a whole county. So we're really trying to take that seriously and make sure that we're showing a little bit of dimension from everybody in the county. So while she is figuring out the presentation, believe it or not, one of the questions that I have been asked a few times in the last few years is why tourism matters at all in the area? Like I've had folks say, you know, why, why do we work on tourism? Is it important for visitors to come to the area? And at the, I mean, I can talk about that all day long. But at the very highest level, tourism really provides a first date to Thurston County. And as you know about first dates, sometimes that's it. You know, sometimes it's a one and done. You come and you're like, no, that ain't for me. But sometimes you catch people for an entire lifetime. And so that's really what this slide talks about. Tourism really has an impact on the county that a lot of folks aren't aware of. It's easy to get hung up on visitor guides and videos because that's the outer-facing, you know, evidence of what we do. But if you kind of follow this cycle across, the first thing you'll see is on the number one, if you build a place where people want to visit, then you're gonna have a place that people want to live. If you build a place that people want to live, then you're gonna have a place where people want to do business. If you have a place that people want to do business, you're gonna build a place where people want to invest. And if you've built a place that's been invested in, then again, you get a place where people want to visit. So yes, our organization does the work that, you know, that you saw in that video. I provide a lot of handouts for you in terms of brochures that we've done, maps, et cetera. But we are trying to make sure that we're working with all of our economic development partners and our municipal partners to make sure that this cycle of impact is happening in the way that it should. And in the process of doing that, there are some building blocks that we provide. Again, what people think about is the output of our work. But it's kind of like that iceberg analogy. You see the tip of the iceberg above the water and that's what folks see and that's what you watch for. But there's this whole other world underneath the surface that you don't see. And that is what this slide is about. When we look at jobs, and this data is from 2022, which was still kind of in that rebound phase of COVID, we provided over 3,800 jobs to the community. That was really evident if you kind of backtrack a little bit during the shutdown phase of the pandemic. When you guys went outside and it was like a echo chamber, it was creepy. There was nobody there to welcome you. You weren't able to go and hang out with your friends and family. That weird feeling that we all experienced was the lack of hospitality in tourism industry.
It's kind of nice. Outside, there's nobody.
No, no way, not nice. We like being able to get together with our friends and family. We want to go to restaurants. We want to have parties. We want to go and travel and we want people to travel to us. Because when that happens, not only do we get that quality of life, we have those jobs and we have economic impact. In 2022, we had over $518 million flow into Thurston County alone just because of hospitality and tourism. And when we think about those jobs, Providence Medical Center has less than 3,000 jobs. Imagine what we would do if Providence came in and said, you know what, we're thinking about shutting down. We would all go, oh, no, no. Not only do we need that service, but that is a part of our community that's important. And so I think that's a little context that I want you guys to be aware of in terms of what, what that impact is. When it comes to taxes in the tourism industry, and I think for you guys, I think it would be logical for you to think of lodging taxes, right? So tourism being built on hotel and motel stays, short-term rental stays. You're like, yep, we bring in a lot of lodging tax. The thing that folks don't think about is the amount of sales tax that comes in from our visitors as well. So when we are coming on the heels of a pandemic where our visitation was down, not only did we not have the coffers being filled up of lodging taxes, but the services, you know, fire, EMS, police, those are all things that get funded through the sales taxes. And so when those visitors don't come, that sales tax doesn't come. Does that make sense? So tourism really is an economic development activity, but with a really limited scope. So what I'm gonna talk about is, I think you understand what we can provide in terms of economic impact, like looking at this slide and from the things that we just talked about. Then I'll start talking about kind of what is that limited scope? And how does that work in partnership with all of our municipal partners, like you guys, our cities, and certainly the other organizations in the area that are working in this space? How many of you would have guessed that restaurants and culinary were that much more of an economic driver than the other sectors? I think a lot of folks were surprised. So this slide is kind of the, the holy grail of how we see our role interacting in the community. In this blue space, that kind of two-thirds in the bottom, this is all local work, right? So we've got the Blue House, we've got the foundation being county. You guys are certainly doing all of your own economic and community development work. You'll also see building blocks in there for each one of our communities. We know every one of these communities, whether they're in a public space or a private investor space, they're also doing economic development work. So are each of our tribal partners. Then you'll see the two organizations listed on there. We've got the Thurston EDC, we've got the Thurston County Chamber. They're, both of those organizations and our municipal partners tend to be very, when we're looking at the economic development space, it's B-to-B or business-to-business. We've got a lot of business support programs, we have business scale-up programs, business networking programs, business events, employer benefits, workforce training. These organizations and our economic development partners are really experts in business-to-business growth and support. Where we provide our kind of local-focused support is in complement to that, but not in duplication. We try really hard to look for and to understand what the scope of work is that our municipal partners, our tribal partners and our other nonprofit partners are doing. And then how do we throw our weight behind it to support it? So over on the right, you'll see the Lodging Tax Award Support Program. What that means is each one of our municipalities that funds us through lodging taxes, so Thurston County, Yelm, Olympia, Lacey and Tumwater, they all provide us a small award. And based on that, we say, okay, folks, you also made all of these other awards because you think those are really good ways to grow tourism. So we're gonna throw our weight behind that and develop a scope of services that we provide to every single one of those recipients to make sure that they're not kind of on their own. And everything that we can do is also put behind them. And that's only two years old. That's new. So we've been really happy with that. We manage the Thurston Bountiful Byway. So what that means is we do the marketing and development work, the brand management, and then also administering the advisory committee that provides their feedback to us as well. We're in the middle of a 10-year countywide destination master plan that we'll talk more about. And we do a lot of market intelligence and research internally. And I think it's important, and we also provide the shared image library. I think it's important to understand these things because they're not at all going to duplicate the work of what you guys are trying to do or what the EDC Chamber is trying to do or our tribes. But we do actually have a lot that we can provide to help make people's work a little easier. The top third of the, of the slide, that little orange area, this is really kind of where we live and breathe. That's where all the videos, the, you know, brochures, maps, et cetera, all the marketing and sales work that we do, that happens in that orange space. The orange space represents 50-plus miles away. The reason that 50-plus miles away is important is because that's the way the municipal code or state statute talks about tourism. If we're funded through lodging tax dollars, and I'll show you guys our budget shortly, we have a small percentage that is, we have to make sure that we only spend that money in that orange space, doing that type of work in that area, 50-plus miles away. That, that provides some good results from the tourism space, but it also provides some problems for us because you can't see the work that we're doing because we're placing it in markets 50-plus miles away. So sometimes folks will say, well, what are they doing? What, I mean, we don't see their ads. Where are their ads running? Well, it's because you're not in the market. And if I'm running them in Thurston Talk in Olympia, I'm not being a good steward of those public funds. And our tourism promotion area is set up similarly, and we'll go through those details. Does that all make sense? So touched on this a little bit. The way we work, we, we have to really look at how the RCWs are written in terms of lodging taxes, since we have some funds from that. We also have to look at the RCWs in terms of tourism promotion area management. About 60% of our budget comes from tourism promotion area assessments. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means and how it's different from lodging taxes. We also are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit, so we have organizational bylaws that we have to comply with. And then kind of relating to that seal on there, we go through a really rigorous accreditation process through our industry, through an organization called Destinations International. It means they look at how are we managing our finances? How are we stewarding public funds? How are we documenting all of our work and making sure that we're compliant with all of our agreements? What are our agreements? What is our organizational structure? What are our HR policies? What's our crisis communications plan? We literally have cans of water and food in our office so that if we lost power, our staff would not be thirsty or hungry. The standards are pretty crazy, but it's important to us so that you guys know that we are ticking every single box possible to make sure that we're not just doing good enough and doing the work, but we're doing not only what the industry says, but what is the highest level of performance for the industry. So our mission is to reveal the most iconic Thurston County experiences for the world to discover. Not surprising for a visitor bureau. And we really want to be known as a top destination in the Pacific Northwest. This slide talks about what's really important to us as humans in our organization, I guess. I've only been in this role just shy of three years. And when I came in, I inherited a couple staff and then I brought in new staff. And I asked everybody to go home, tell me what is important to you about how this organization is gonna operate? Whether it's from you to me, you to a stakeholder, board member to you, organization to organization. Come back and tell me what those five or six things are. And interestingly enough, most people came back with the same words. And then we put these words in front of our board and we said, this is what we think our rules of engagement should be. Aside from our kind of KPIs and how our hotels are filled and what's our ADR and all the industry standard things, do you agree that we should all be evaluating ourselves on these things? And they said yes. So it's actually a really important slide for us because all of us in our organization are evaluated based on our, you know, our key, how are we delivering on our jobs? But we can be perfect at our jobs, but if we are not being transparent, if we're not being respectful, if we're not following the rules, if we're not running a clean ship, we're gonna have problems. And that's how we base our kind of B-to-B relationships. We're going to be transparent. We're gonna work with organizations that are equally transparent. Doesn't mean that we're perfect, but we really try. And this is our small little team. There's only six of us. I think people think that we're a lot bigger than we are. Our peers in the industry have 20-plus staff. There's not a lot of us. So we're all working ridiculously long hours. So we try to be really responsive, but just keep in mind, six people. This is our Board of Directors. If you're ever curious about the, you know, what is the overall direction? First of all, you should, I mean, it's good to be curious, but if you ever have a question, we publish everything on our website. Our business plan is on our website, our board is on our website, our annual report's on our website. But feel free to reach out to any of our board members. We try to be really inclusive. Yes, sir.
And does that show up when somebody shoots that Q code?
Well, that is actually gonna take people to the Thurston Bountiful Byway page. But it is linked, so if you're on the Thurston Bountiful Byway page, you could get to the Board of Directors.
Well, no, I just, and, and the video, like you showed.
Oh, yeah.
It's all.
It is all online.
You can get there, right there. So if we stick that on our window, I take it and somebody comes up, takes a picture of it.
That would take you to the Thurston Bountiful Byways page, but it is connected to our overall website. Yeah.
Something I think is like interesting and I just want to ask about or talk about is there's, there's no county representation. I even see two Port of Olympia Commissioners, but there's no, no Thurston County representation on the Board of Directors.
So first of all, we don't have any requirement in our bylaws that we have to have electeds. You can either have an elected or a staff. The port recently is just saying they want to share their role. They carry one vote. The county would be welcome to have a board position. Where the county sits on our board is on our, we have another board. The, where most of our funds come from, our TPA has its own Board of Directors. And Jenica sits on that board. So when we go to the TPA Board, which is made up of hotel and motel folk, they get the exact same packet, board meeting, finances, everything that our full board gets. But if the county would like to have a representative on our board board, we wouldn't have any problem with that.
So I would also add that the, the county's position on the TPA is non-voting. And when it began, County Commissioner actually sat in that seat. And after, I think maybe the first two years, that's when they delegated. So you could choose to sit on that as a non-voting member or we could work with you to become a voting member of your Board of Directors.
I'm, I'm content, but you'll find out.
I'll let you and Jenica arm wrestle for that.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, it is an open-door policy. Our goal with our organizational board or the TPA Board is just to make sure that we're being inclusive. We try to make sure we've got somebody from every corner of the county, from, you know, I mean, we're not perfect, but we are, we're definitely trying. And we're within, we're close to the higher end of how many folks that we can have, but we're not there yet. I will say there's potentially some change coming, maybe, on how our governance, governance structure might be set up just as a result of the destination master planning process, which we'll talk about here today as well. One of the things that we've done is organizational benchmarking to look at our peers in the industry and see how they're set up. Then we'll look at our scope of recommendations that come out of the plan and then say, are we positioned correctly? Just like this. Maybe the county feels like they would like to have more presence. If that's a thing, then we say, cool.
I think that's a good thing for the Commissioner of Funds.
He's like, go for it.
You did a great job in tonight. I'll carry that right on through.
Okay, I'm gonna keep us going to respect the time. So this is just a need-to-know slide. This is...
I'm sorry, thanks. Commissioner Mahia, did you have a question? I missed your hand.
No, I had a question, but Commissioner Fortner asked it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We wind up often being asked to do things that either, yep, we can absolutely do them, but often they're really not in our wheelhouse and we need to, we need to send those down to the folks that they belong to. We also are periodically asked to take on work that hasn't been approved. We go through an incredible, to get a budget passed, just FYI, we start with our finance committee, it then goes to my executive committee, it'll probably go back and forth a few times. It then goes to my organizational Board of Directors. Once they're okay with it, it then goes to the TPA Board of Directors. Once they're okay with it, it then comes to you guys and then you guys say yes or no or adjustments or whatever. So when people come to us mid-year and they say, hey, I want you to do this thing, even if we want to do the thing, we have to go through this kind of decision tree to make sure that A, are we in our lane and B, has it been approved? Is it in our work plan? Does it fit within our budget? Because at that point, if the answer is no, we have to kind of go through this process. Does that make sense? And that, that is one of the things that has really been difficult in the last couple of years, of trying to get folks to understand, we're not digging our heels and saying no because we don't want to do things. But if I went through all those layers of saying, here's our budget, you've approved it, all of that's tied to a work plan. If we're all of a sudden taking a right turn, then we can wind up in ethical. So speaking of our budget, this is the budget that you guys approved last summer. We do a mid-year budget adjustment every year at the same time when we propose the upcoming year. We are about a $1.4 million budget. We're really small compared to our kind of peers in the economic development space. We have a really small percentage of lodging taxes in our budget. It's really pretty unusual for a VCB. It's just a matter of, of policy. We do have over 20% of our budget represented through LTAC funds. So that's why we try to make sure that we're really complying with those RCWs. I've sat on lodging tax advisory committees or applied for lodging tax funds for like 20-some-odd years. I am in, in probably eight different counties. So I feel like I really understand this space. I think there's so much potential without getting further down the rabbit hole. I think there's so much potential if we could get strategic about how our lodging taxes are allocated and what we want to do. I think that's why the lod- I think that's why the Lodging Tax Award Support Program is really important to us, is that it makes sure that we're being very strategic in supporting the decisions that are being made. So, seeing that big Burgundy area, the 60-plus percent, which is Tourism Promotion Area Assessments, that's significant. So, we'll talk about what that means. Any questions on the budget or comments? So, this is just a breakdown. I won't read it verbatim. The language on the blue comes from the RCWs about how lodging taxes have to be spent in the area. This is verbiage that comes right out of our contract with the county, talking about what we can do. We're often asked by folks in other counties, because we're kind of ahead of the curve on research in a lot of ways, we'll have folks say, hey, can you come and do this for our county? Because we're, we're good neighbors. We work together. I can't do stuff that's going to put people in their hotels. If I can make a case that we can send somebody over to Little Creek Casino and that they're going to come back and stay here, awesome. And we can, in certain cases. But we have to be really careful because 60% of our revenue is guided by that language where it says, we have to be putting the funds back into, you know, tourism that comes back to Thurston County, and specifically Thurston County Lodging, those properties that collect the funds. It really limits us. Does anybody have questions on the difference between assessments and taxes? Because they are different. I'm just going to tell you anyway, even though you didn't have a question. Because I think it's an important distinction. If you're staying at a, right, a property that qualifies to collect lodging taxes, everybody pays it. The difference with an assessment is you have an industry sector, like hotels, where they said, huh, we think that if we collect this money, $2 a room night from these folks that are staying less than 30 days, our property has less than 40, or at least 40 spaces, we think that that, the work that the Visitor Bureau will do will replenish those people who came here. Does that make sense? So, they voluntarily said, tax us. We'll collect that extra $2. And like in Spokane, $5 a room night. We're like one of the cheapest places you can stay in Washington State. But they say, we think the work that you're going to do to bring people to our properties is so good that we're willing to take that tax on, on top of lodging taxes. So, it is different than lodging tax. These are the communities that pass through Tourism Promotion Area Assessments. It's important for a few reasons. Yelm has one property that qualifies to collect TPA. Just not sure what's happening there with that property right now. I think we've got some...
It was just purchased by the tribe?
Yes.
And it won't be?
It will not be contributing to TPA anymore. So, that's a good question, so, or a good comment, because our number-one magnet of visitors in Thurston County is Great Wolf Lodge, hands down. And being majority tribally owned, none of those taxes, I mean, it's a great thing for the tribe, but they do not flow into the community, and they don't flow into TPA. That will be the same thing with Quamath Resort and any other, you know, like the Squaxen Development. They're still really important that we have them, but it's good for folks to know what those limitations are, although there are statues, there are cases in other communities where the municipalities have partnered with those tribes and said, we will, for whatever service you're providing, we'll give you a certain percentage of our sales tax, or our lodging tax, or what have you.
If an assessment's self-imposed, can they impose their own assessment?
They do. They have their own TPA that is tribal, that goes back to the community. The other thing that's important about this slide is sometimes in our smaller communities in the county, they'll say, hey, we really want you to do this thing out here. It costs like $30,000, and it's actually a really good idea. And I would love to be able to do it. Except, I can't demonstrate that it will bring visitors or put people into hotels. And it goes back to that whole lodging tax, TPA, my hands are tied problem. So, we do focus on generating additional revenue through private funds. You'll have seen that in that slide, but you're kind of seeing where our hands start getting tied a little bit. Our business plan, you have a copy of it. There's a website, in case you don't want to use QR code and go the back door with a Thurston Bountiful Byway sticker. You can easily go there. We publish everything that we do. In there, you're going to see the three core driving forces that are the underpinnings for everything that we do this year. We think proof of performance is the best way to instill trust that we actually know what we're doing, and that we're going to do what we say we're going to do, and that we use the funds correctly. So, we're going to really be upping the ante. We already are very oriented towards proof of performance. I'll show you our scorecard. It's also on our website, but we're going to be taking it to the next level and making sure people really understand that we are doing what we say that we're going to do, and we do it at the highest level. We also know that it has to result in growing the economy. And then we need to take a good, hard look at the organization and say, are we set up correctly? Kind of to Wayne's point, are we missing something? Maybe should the county be on our board board rather than TPA board? Or should it be both, or whatever? These are the KPIs we use to measure ourselves, speaking of proof of performance. We measure our performance and our impact every single month. And we report it on our scorecard. It's, there's, again, the web address. If you're ever wondering, what are they doing? And how are we doing as an industry? You'll be able to look at our lodging inventory and see, what is our occupancy rate? What's our average daily rate? How much revenue are we getting per room? You'll look at our marketing KPIs and say, do I actually know what they're talking about? What are they doing? And then on the direct sales side. And sales is hard for us now because we don't exactly have a lot to book. With the closure of the Olympia Hotel at Capital Lake, that was our only kind of medium space. So, we are, we're hard-pressed. Jeff on our team is getting real creative. I'm looking at Tenino Ranch as an opportunity for big events in a way that I know people think is crazy, but that's what we're looking at now. Like, are we, can we take formal events and put them in a rodeo area? And the answer is yes, because they steamroll it, and it turns it into concrete. Might be a little dusty, though, but that's where we are. So, if anybody comes to you and wants to build meeting space, I have got so much data to back the need for that up, I would be your best friend. On the branding side, one of the things that I heard when I first came in, I did like 50-plus appointments with stakeholders from all through the county, anybody who had talked to me. Our organization went through a rebrand, I believe it was 2018, 2017, 18. We used to be the Olympia Lacy Tumwater Visitor and Convention Bureau. Can you imagine how hard it was for my predecessors to market that as a brand? People don't make vacation plans based on names like that. They make vacation plans based on, huh, I want to go somewhere that has the things I like to do. I want to go somewhere that has the kinds of things that are important to me. And they also want to go to places that they know where they are. So, they made a decision that people knew that Olympia was a capital. They stuck their flag on the hill, and they said, let's hook people based on knowing the capital, and then let's disperse them through the rest of the county. I think where, in the process, we might have not done as well as we could have is I think some folks felt like they didn't get that push through the county. I know that there was a scope of work to do that, but for some reason, the optics, I think maybe just weren't as visible. So, one of the early things that we did was develop a co-branding program to help people somehow, if they want to, tie into that brand. So, we created graphic standards, manuals, and images, and branding for each one of our communities to use if they want to. That said, if you don't want to, they don't have to, but at least they're included. We use a lot of research internally. We invest heavily in data. I don't ever want somebody to look at our organization as the recipient of public funds and say, well, those are my dollars. What are you doing with them? Well, why did you do that? I want to always be able to point to research and data so it's not Annette's whim that's causing us to do something, or Annette's feelings, or Annette's preferences. So, we have two geo-fencing platforms. They work a little differently, but we use Placer AI. To be completely honest, Placer is like so wildly detailed in the economic development and reporting space, that it's kind of above our pay grade. I thank goodness, I have a researcher who's brilliant in my team. And she's really done a great job of figuring out all of the things that we can use from Placer. But I would say that's like 10% of that platform's potential. And I really feel like folks like the EDC are the folks that need to be using tools like Placer. So, I've been working on negotiating a contract option with them to allow the EDC to have a license off of our platform so they don't have to pay for it. They would have to pay for the license, but not the full platform. What this thing can do makes Datify look like it was 25 years old. And Datify is fantastic because it's simple and concise, and I can pull up reporting really quickly and say, who's here in Thurston County today? Where did they come from? Where did they go? What's their economic impact? But Placer, you can take a look at Grand Mound and see how many permits have been issued for development? What are they for? What does the traffic flow look like around this potential development site? Could there be a potential traffic bottleneck? What's the crime overlay? Is it violent crime? Is it, you know, personal property? Like, it takes things to a level that we're not going to go because it's not our lane, but it all comes with this thing. So, we're trying to figure out, how do we maximize our investment and give access where we're able to? You look like you have a question.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. What's that?
Somebody walked by that looked familiar.
Oh, okay. Okay. Datify, also geo-fencing-based. The reason why we're running two platforms is Datify allows us to link our digital media to it. So, this is where things get a little big-brother-y, but we want to make sure that we're not throwing money kind of in the wind with marketing and hoping that it brings somebody here. So, what we do, we use our two platforms, Placer and Datify, to figure out not only what are the markets that bring the most people, but what are the markets that bring the most people that stay in our hotels, right? So, we replenish those coffers. We create ads that resonate with them based on the data. We send those ads to those folks in those markets. They're going to get them on their phone. They'll look at it and say, huh, that looks pretty cool. They click on it. It's going to link to a page on our website. When they link to that page on our website, their device is then pixelled. We don't get any information about them as individuals. But what we can do is through media attribution, we can then say, ding ding, they're in Thurston County, and they're in one of our hotels. So, we can then do some A/B testing. Don't be worried, we don't get anybody's names or personal information. But what I can see at the end of a campaign is if we invested $10,000, what is the ROI on that market? If this market brings us a 500-to-1 ROI versus this one is 50-to-1 ROI, you bet we're going to use the $500. Exactly, exactly. And since we're in the business of 80% of our budget being public dollars, I'm not, we're not guessing where we're going to place our investments. So, we're just trying to be really good stewards of the funds that we're trusted with and actually do our work at the highest level. Does that all make sense?
Going back to the beginning of that little spiel you went through, the, who's getting these, are they texts or emails, or what do you?
They're digital ads.
They're digital ads.
So, if you're, let's say, you're in the target audience that we're running our spring campaign for. They might be looking at their phone and looking at Google, searching for something. And if there's somebody who has been in our market before, they're probably going to get an ad. If there's somebody who has been to our website before, they will probably get an ad. So, there's a few different kinds. Some are just going to get it because they're in the right geographic market, but some will get it because they're in a look-alike market. Some will get it because they have been here before, and we know that they like us.
This is that thing where, all of a sudden, you're on Facebook, and you're getting these ads, and you're like, how is the phone reading my mind?
Yes. Although, this is not through social media. This is purely through, but it's the same technology.
It's that same thing where you're like, why am I all of a sudden being bombarded with ads for corn when I was hungry for it last night?
Exactly, exactly. So, it's just, it's data-based marketing, and that is where the industry is. But I try to just remind people, don't worry. We're not, we're collecting numbers, not names. So, we just want to make sure we're not wasting any money. Other tools we use is economic impact calculators that are just kind of industry standards. So, like for folks that are Lodging Tax Award recipients, we can help them quantify what the economic impact of their event or activity was. And then we can use our geo-fencing software to help people measure how many folks were likely here. Where did they come from so that they aren't wasting their money guessing as to where their audiences came from? Some standard stuff like Smith Travel Research, that gives us all of our hotel occupancy and rate information. Tourism Economics gives us our economic impact information so we know how much impact our work actually has. So, some of our geo-fencing information, just FYI, when we look at people that were actually in our hotels last year, these were our top markets. Keep in mind, and this is data from Datify, keep in mind that you can always pull the, you can pull data a million different ways. So, if I'm pulling our top arrival markets, period, for visitation, it's going to look different. Seattle's going to be number one because we're a drive market by and large. We are fly-drive as well. But Seattle brings a lot of people by car for the day, and then they'll go home and spend the night at home. But our folks that are traveling up from the south tend to actually spend the night with us more. So, we do market to both. We did a pretty exhaustive sentiment survey this last year where we reached out to not only visitors, but prospective visitors, people who live and work here, people who are stakeholders in the industry as well, and just ask them about all the things that they care about, ask us how we're doing. These are their interests from the folks that responded. And we did have a really nice sample. It was just south of 1,000 people that completed this long, long process of a survey. So, we feel pretty good about the data. Food is really important here. So, it, and it's not just restaurants. It's the stuff that's happening out at the Ag Park, that kind of regenerative agritourism experience that we have that actually is pretty unique. We're still trying to figure out exactly how do we craft our messaging around that. I was just telling Jenica, we just got a nice grant from State of Washington Tourism to promote regenerative agritourism, where we're going to talk about, we're going to showcase some of our local farmers and ranchers and the products that they're bringing to market. We'll show, if the Ag Park is ready, kind of what the role is for that. We'll show some of our farm-to-table restaurants and producers, and try to show through that video and through photography, that kind of full scope. But I think that's going to be more and more central to our scope of work in the future. People also told us that their personal values were really important to them, that they really want to go to places that align with what's important to them. So, whether it's LGBTQIA+, veteran-owned, women-owned, accessible, wellness-oriented, or transformational, we're trying to figure out how do we connect the dots between what our visitors want and what we have. Just some quick demographics. We have a surprising number of people that travel alone, which I thought was really interesting. This slide just kind of gives you a full scope of how we approach our work. Research has to be, and data has to be, the background of everything that we do, again, just so that we're not speculating about anything. And you'll just get a full breakout of what all those things mean. I'm not going to read it to you today, but in all of your spare time, you can hang out at home with a glass of wine and check it out. Here's some examples of our work. One of the campaigns we started last year was called You Belong Here. It was kind of in response to a grant that we wrote through the Port of Seattle that was wanting to link up fly-drive experiences, folks that were going to come in through Sea-Tac International, go out through the rest of the state. They also wanted to target LGBTQIA+ plus BIPOC people. So, we kicked off the You Belong Here campaign with that. We linked it to our media attribution tool, and we did a whole campaign using that to start last year. But this year, we're kind of morphing it more into the accessibility space and just to that values-based space. So, you'll see more of that happening this year. We have a brand-new PR person who came onto our team last month, and she is amazing. Within like a couple of weeks of just working her personal contacts, she sent in a pitch for, to travel and leisure, talking about Olympia being the number-one place to live and work, and they bid it. And so, she's, she's just doing amazing work, and we're really lucky. You'll see some of the materials that we've produced and some of our community guides, whether they're digital... whether they're digital like on there or the hard copies that you have. Just showing you some of the results of our work. Our website is really crazily good. Um, we are up month after month um above last year um and pre-pandemic by a landslide. We use pretty much every tool that we can to to measure that. We use GA4, uh just kind of your standard Google Analytics for the website. But we've also started looking at Semrush. And Semrush is really important because it allows us to look at our comp sets. We want to make sure that when we look at our organic traffic of what we're not paying folks to come and see, um that we're still coming out on top. So when we look at our traffic versus our neighbors that visit Vancouver, visit Grace Harbor, discover Lewis County, they're substantially below our traffic. We're bringing in on average forty-three thousand organic visits per month compared to, say, nine thousand, one thousand four seven, or four point seven thousand. So it's like um we're we're doing a good job there. I also think it's important to look at our our kind of industry peers, not because their websites should be at the same traffic level, but it just demonstrates when it comes to B to C communications, looking at consumer direct communications, we kind of know our lane. We're we're talking to consumers, trying to bring them in, and we're doing the work successfully. Does this all make sense?
Can you, I'm sorry, I think I missed this. What is an organic visit?
So it's an unpaid visit. So part of what we do is we'll do all of this content creation, like the videos, blogs, all the materials that you have, they're in digital form, they're on the website. We don't put any money into that per se. We we put our money into the marketing to drive people to the website. But you can also pay, right? You can do um paid Google AdWords, you can do a lot of paid social to push people to your site, to push your numbers. So when we're looking at the organic traffic, that's traffic that comes to our site without paying anything to it. I would guarantee every single person in our comp sets, whether we're looking at DMOs or our peer industries, has way more traffic than that. But this is just the organic that comes without any promotion. Does that make sense? And we're almost, we're almost done. We're real close. The Destination Master Plan um is the last kind of major project that I think we really need to make sure you guys are all aware of. We started this process last August. It's countywide. It's a ten-year um vision for Thurston County. Um, we've went through this whole continuum. We brought our vendors in back in September. We took them to a different location throughout the county every fifteen minutes for three days, twelve hours a day, non-stop, to not only see the place, but to talk to the folks um running their businesses and organizations here. We've done um an AI-aided um strategic and comprehensive plan audit. We've taken a look at every single strategic or comprehensive plan that has been published and is being used in Thurston County. Over a thousand pages that AI was used to distill what are all the things that all of our organizations are working on because we think they're important or we think they're difficult. Bless you, bless you. But they're being worked on individually and not necessarily collaboratively. Because we want to make sure that in our recommendations from this plan, that we're not recommending something that is at odds with what you guys are already working on. Does that make sense? Um, we also did over a hundred individual conversations with our consultant, whether they're one-on-ones or industry sector conversations through focus groups. We did the big survey that went out to just overnight or just under a thousand folks. We also did a public forum and we did a public visioning workshop series. So we have collected a crazy amount of information that this steering committee, which again, another group of folks that are vetting all of our work, has been um reviewing and making sure that uh is reflective of the overarching county-wide priorities. And Jenica is on uh that steering committee as well. And at the end of it all, I'm really sorry, this is so small. Get on your reading goggles. There were twenty-nine overarching issues and opportunities that were identified through that entire process. Up at the top are the things that have floated up as the things that we want to see being prioritized first. So what we're calling active implementation. Beneath that are the things that will fall into the advocacy and the monitoring phases. So um those kind of top four that have equal bars are community engagement, tribal relationships and tourism, connectivity, workforce development and DEIA. Those are kind of the lenses that we're gonna say, everything that we do, we have to look at how we're doing um in these categories. But then beneath that, we have Quamish Resort, we have agritourism in the Thurston County Highway, sports events and facilities, events, festivals and seasonality, retail and commercial district development, accommodations products, which I believe is retooled to diverse diversity and number and quantity of lodging properties.
All right, can you, can you say that all again? The last part?
The accommodations products was just renamed. It was renamed to like quantity and diversity of lodging products because we want to make sure that we're not just saying we want more. We're saying we want the right kind and we want them in strategic locations. Conference and meeting space, waterfront activation, destination stewardship.
Was this done prior to the shutdown of the conference and meeting space that existed?
It started, it it definitely pushed it up. But even, I mean, this process started before that and that certainly moved it up. But I would say, even if that had never closed, we have some major deficits. And you'll know, I've said this at probably every public meeting, somebody's gonna get smart and figure out a way to put some type of lodging between Tenino and Grand Mound. Grand Mound being this, you know, all of this traffic going through and love them, I'm happy for the Chehalis tribe going to, you know, having all these folks going to Great Wolf Lodge. But I I think there isn't some unmet opportunity there. And that's an example of why diversity and types of lodging need to be looked at. Waterfront activation, destination stewardship, family attractions, arts, entertainment, et cetera. Those are the kind of top-line um projects uh to start first. And so where we are um is, we now know what those recommendations are. The consultant is gonna come back, um meet with the steering committee in a few weeks and say, here are the the highly detailed bits of how we envision all of these things coming to work. Here are the folks that we think should be leading these efforts. These are the folks that should be supporting these efforts. And we'll be negotiating kind of a handoff between how does the steering committee lead this work? And what is the interactivity with our board and all of those kind of details? So there's a lot of stuff to be determined, but we're just about to the point where we're gonna hit go. And I think it won't be surprising to you that I would say, you know, eighty percent of those things on that top list, they're not things that the VCB is gonna be leading. We we set the table for company to come over and we said, hey, steering committee, come over and and see all of this stuff that we need to work on together. We're gonna support our partners, but like I'm not gonna say it's my job to go out and recruit the hotel. We know that that would be like the EDC or it would be the county or whichever, you know, city that it falls between. And if we're gonna say we need to develop a workforce trainings uh program, that's probably the chamber because they already have a workforce training program. But if they need data, if they need any type of communication on a B to C level, like if they want to recruit people to participate in their workforce program, we could probably be of help. So we we're at the point where we're gonna figure out who's in the front seat, who's in the backseat. I think we're gonna be in the backseat a lot and that's perfectly okay with us. We just want to make sure that the work is getting done so that we actually can build the community that we want. I have one minute. Okay, I'm almost done, though. I think I timed this almost exactly right. This is just visitation data from a geofencing platform. Most of you will have seen this. We are going to start providing a quarterly um municipal report is what we're calling it, where we just send you guys, here's your visitation from the last quarter from geofencing. Do with it what you want. The first one that we'll come out with is gonna be for twenty-twenty-three as a whole, so you can see what happened last year. Uh, but then we'll start on a quarterly basis, sending this out to the county and each of our city governments as well. Just more, um, oh, you know what? Just, I can go back. FYI, if you're in a lodging tax advisory capacity, look how we how we spike in July and August. All those other low periods, those are our need periods. I think we need to really be aware of that, so when we're looking at these new activities and events, if somebody's got some wild and wacky ideas for January and February, I think we need to prioritize that.
Let's steal winter grass.
What's that?
Let's steal winter grass from Bellevue.
Okay.
Winter time bluegrass festival?
Yeah, there is.
That's pretty cool.
And the same thing?
I went to Bellevue.
Yeah.
Should come back to South Sound.
It's, they're stealing involved.
And on the visitors by day up in the left, you'll see that green dip. That's your, that's our other need periods. We're doing fine on the weekends. Let's figure out a way to work backward and create some long weekends. Start with Friday. How do we incentivize people coming for a Friday or a Monday? This is where folks are coming from on the aggregate. You guys can go back and look at this. I don't want to go too over. Media attribution that I talked about, how we place the ads and their uh devices are pixelled and we can then see when they come back through our geofence. This was our campaign that we did last year. We put in seventy-three thousand dollars. What we got out um in terms of economic impact for the destination was over was over fifty-seven million dollars. Uh, when we look at how many came through um actual hotels, we generated over fourteen thousand room nights off of one digital campaign. So you can see what the ROI's are and that's kind of how we're making some of these strategic marketing decisions. I was one minute over.
I don't know if I have a question. I've got a few things I'll get with you maybe when we make time to visit. But I just think we're darn fortunate to have you and your enthusiasm doing this. That was a super good presentation. And I hope EDC will pay attention to it and maybe market a little bit, you know? Because it's, boy, anybody's interested in in that area, they better come take a look at that. Just your presentation.
That's nice. And I, we have a really good relationship. I I think they're they're very much aware of what's going on, I think, in that area because I'm pontificating about it at every opportunity. And and they have the skill set to do that. So I just, my little dream through the Destination Master Plan is by getting all of these people together that we have created a space where we can make ourselves all be strategic. We're not gonna be doing the work, but we can, I can set the table for company and see. All right.
In this material, I just didn't happen to see that QR code business in here. I mean, I I just know it makes it easy for some people, like to see them whip their camera out.
I think you're totally right. We're gonna add QR codes to our brochures and visitor guides. Yep. There was a little window where everybody thought QR codes were going away and then they all came back with a huge surge. So we were all wrong.
Thank you. Um, so you've talked a little bit about hotels and kind of the lack of, basically. But I I didn't really hear you talk about convention centers this time. You talked a little bit about meeting space, but convention centers is something that I've heard in the past. Have have there been conversations? You shared data about uh meeting spaces, like is that kind of in relation with convention center or?
Yes and no. So A, give me a convention center, anyone, please. I will take them, all of them, all day long. Because they're the best insurance policy your community can have, even though I know folks will push back and say, oh, they don't pencil. If you're looking at a building itself, probably not gonna pencil. If you look at the multiplier effect and what it can do for the community and the businesses around it, it more than pencils. There are convention centers proper being discussed, all from what I know in a tribal capacity. Obviously, what's going on with the plans for Quamish, Squaxton has a plan as well. Hopefully, everybody's tracking with that. And I hear about things that are happening in Chehalis, but I don't know actually much about what's going on with that with that development. But I'd like to. Wayne, if you know, I want to know. I think you know. So there are those types of developments that are happening. I, when we talk about meeting space, obviously that is, you know, gonna be contained within the conversation about convention centers. But there's also a much larger and overarching need for additional kinds of meeting space. As a part of the Destination Master Planning process, we had a market potential analysis done for lodging and meeting space. And we found that even if somebody, um like I know the Hands-on Children's Museum is doing an expansion um and they're adding meeting space into it, even if they put in ten thousand square feet of meeting space, there's an insane amount of remaining market potential. If we had each one of our tribal partners put in a three-hundred-and-fifty-room property and they added on meeting space and the Hands-on Children's Museum put in their meeting space. And I know TVW is adding like a small plan for meeting space. And the Brewery Park at Tom Waterfalls is adding like seventy, uh seventy-five-person-capacity small meeting space when they're doing their History and Nature Center. We're still gonna have capacity because we lose so much business. If you look at our scorecards every month and you see the lost business section, we report that on purpose so that not only are we being accountable, but we can see where our competitors are cleaning the floor with us on meetings. You get so much more rate through a uh a meeting booking than you do an individual because corporate visitors are often tied to per diem and they'll get more. So it's just, um when you're looking at the competitive environment, we're we're missing so much by being so heavily vested on the leisure traveler, the independent leisure traveler. We want them, but anytime you have an investment portfolio, you mitigate risk through diversification and we're not diversified. Sorry, I can get all sorts of riled up on these.
Good answer. Okay, we get to commissioners. Thank you so much, Annette.
Thank you. Anybody want this hard copy? Do you ever have your own?
Uh, yeah, we've got a copy of that.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
See you, Annette.
Yeah.
Puget Sound Energy is that stuff? Behind me? Yeah, your pencil sharpened? You've been waiting for the presentation.
I got it. I'm looking for that balance.
All right.
Okay, so how does the text stuff work?
I think we have your PowerPoint all ready.
Okay. Should I just tell you next slide then? Because I'm gonna look at my notes on my computer as we go along.
Hello, Mr. Ma. How are you?
Good. Aren't you county manager yet?
I have not. I was trying to figure out the way in which this is supposed to work. Do I just kind of roll over?
Pleasure to be here, Lenny.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Doug is former mayor of Olympia. Now he's just a million different things.
I brought him along.
Nowhere to begin. And people just bring him along as a as a hot shot to help help with the presentation, too.
Well, who's a member of the VCB board?
We just discussed that. We don't have one.
Okay.
But we're working on it. I think we've got a fun candidate.
You've got a fun candidate.
Because I'm facilitating their, they have an ongoing board retreat to help implement the Destination Master Plan. Can you help them with that?
Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Christine Rafa, Senior Local Government Affairs Rep for Puget Sound Energy. And this meeting started, it's Robin's fault. I asked Robin if I could meet the new Board of County Commissioners, Emily and Wayne, and sit down and do a PSC 101 slide deck for them. And and a couple weeks later, she's like, everybody wants to come. And I'm like, ah, okay, sure, I can go do this. So this is um a high-level overview of um what Puget Sound Energy does. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the clean energy transition as well, because I know a lot of folks have questions about that. So this picture, oops, go back one, sorry. This picture is a picture of our Wild Horse um wind farm facility out in Vantage. It um makes about two-hundred-and-seventy-three megawatts of energy. And just to put that into context for folks, that powers about sixty-three thousand homes. And if you have not done the tour out there, the tour starts in April. It is an amazing tour. You get to actually go into the bottom of a turbine and look up and they take you through um the fields. We've done a lot of conservation work. And in building that facility, we look at, we looked at migration um of elks and tried to build uh the turbines around those. And we saved these little um cactuses that are um endangered out there. It's just a, it's a fascinating tour and I encourage folks to take that.
Sixty-three theatres and houses, three-hundred-and-seventy-whatever watts?
Three-hundred-and-seventy-three megawatts.
That's at that facility. What about the one that's in Thurston County?
Skookum, Skookum Chuck, I believe, is the name of that one. We do not own that one. That, I don't know how many megawatts it makes, but we do buy all of the power from that facility and it goes to our green and direct program, which a lot of municipalities buy into so that they can um just have pure, clean, green energy. buy into so that they can, um, just have pure, clean, green energy powering their municipalities.
But I'm not sure that's in Thurston County.
Really?
It's, I think it's Lu, Thurston and Lewis.
Well, mostly.
Isn't it?
Mostly, like, all over. We had not the best reputation for a business coming in to try and build something. It was supposed to be in Thurston County.
Interesting.
Oh, interesting. Thank you for that background. Okay, so this is our agenda. Um, I'm just going to talk a little bit, um, about a safety moment. At Puget Sound Energy, we're very much into safety, um, and keeping our customers safe and our employees safe. Going to do a little bit of a background on PSC. Um, and then, like I said, talk about our clean energy transformation. And at the very end, I'll, I'll share some information about our clean energy products and the direction that we're going there. So let's start with a safety moment. That's appropriate for spring. Everybody's out in their yards doing, um, you know, yard work and, um, it's very important for folks to call eight-one-one before they start digging. We have a lot of natural gas lines and electric lines that are buried throughout our communities. Um, so please call eight-one-one, um, before you start digging. Um, you could hurt yourself and it could cost you a lot of money if you don't. So there's your safety moment. We start with a safety moment at almost every meeting at Puget Sound Energy.
You know, and if I could, I would add, add and reinforce that. This is probably one of the key parts of the collaborative relationship that we have with a private utility and municipalities. That sometimes they think they can call the city and they'll know what's what, but you also need to consult with PSC if you're going to dig. So as an elected official, sometimes you'll get phone calls about stuff like that and you need to remind them. Anytime you're sticking a shovel in the dirt, you might want to check with PSC as well.
Thank you, Doug.
And eight-one-one is a quick way to get there.
Cover's all that.
Yes, they'll be, that usually can come out within two days. They like to have two days notice if you call. And it's free. So, awesome. All right. Who we are. So this next slide, um, shows some of our demographics. We are in ten counties up and down the Puget Sound region. Um, we've got about six thousand square miles, um, in Washington that we serve. We are the Pacific Northwest's oldest and largest utility. Um, we provide, um, one electricity to about one-point-two-million, um, customers and we have about nine-hundred-thousand natural gas customers. We employ about three-thousand-three-hundred folks, um, most of them in the Bellevue area where we're headquartered. And, uh, we make a lot of energy. We put out about sixty-five-hundred megawatts a year. Um, and we actually do own two of our own hydro facilities. We have the Baker River Dam, upper and lower, and that's up by concrete in northern Washington. And we also own and operate the Snowpawne, um, Fall Facility. We also own and operate three wind farms in eastern Washington. I touched, uh, on the Wild Horse Facility. And this week, we actually did break ground on a brand-new wind farm in Montana. So their wind profile matches our energy use better than eastern Washington. Um, so when, when we need wind the most, which is like between eight and ten in the morning and four and six in the afternoon, Montana's winds are blowing. So we're building a new facility over there. It's called Beaver Creek. And so this makes Puget Sound Energy the fourth-largest utility generator in, of power, wind power in the United States. So we're very proud of that.
Where, where is that Beaver Creek one?
I don't know. I, I don't know the exact location. I can get that information-
Oh, it's not there yet.
We just broke ground-
Yeah.
-this week, so, um, but it's, it's in Beaver Creek. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I can find out for you if you're curious.
So, and Christine, the rest of the white area, is that, um, predominantly public utilities then?
You know, I'm not sure, um, who, you know, who's powering. I know Lewis County has a public utility district, so does Mason County. Uh, I think it is Snowpud, yeah, around those areas. So, and one thing I forgot to mention is you've got the, the cream-colored or the beige-colored up there that is electricity only. Um, the purple is natural gas only. So in Lewis County, which is one of my areas that I cover, it's just natural gas down there that we serve. Um, but Thurston and everybody else in the orange, those are territories that have both electricity and gas, um, that we provide. So-
And the brown again is no gas?
The, the brown again is electricity only.
Yeah.
Yeah, no gas.
The light, the light-
Spot on. Yep, spot on. And that's one thing to keep in mind as you look at that map. Um, if we get rid of natural gas as we move closer and closer to our clean energy goals, um, think about the burden that we're putting on those PUDs. They're going to have customers that no longer have access to natural gas and now they're going to be required to provide electricity to them. So that'll make more sense as, as I move along, which is something-
So I, I guess, are we going to get to ask some questions as this goes along?
You tell me. We've got an hour. This is going to take about a half an hour. Happy to try to answer-
You guys are pulling back your natural gas services.
We're going to have to, um, to meet the CETA goals, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions.
When you say the, the goals, what goals?
I'll get into that.
Yeah. So natural gas, that comes up later in the presentation.
But have you got a plan to augment that with electricity?
We'll talk about that, yeah.
So that we can plug our car in?
Yes. Short answer is yes. PSC has plans.
And it's going to be there shortly, right? Okay.
All right, okay. So this is some specific information on Thurston County. I just thought it would be interesting, um, how many pipes and overhead wires we have, the number of underground cables. Interestingly, we do have more underground than overhead in Thurston County. Um, and as a company as a whole, about forty-nine percent of our distribution lines are underground, which is safer for our customers and-
Where in Thurston County is that?
Increases reliability. What, Wayne?
That's not in Thurston County. That's a, is it?
Yeah, that, that's the, those are the numbers at the-
No, 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 the picture.
Oh, gosh.
The spellinghouse, all right, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have no idea where that picture-
That's nice.
It looks like Fairhaven, Elingham.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah.
Sorry.
No, yeah, excellent. I didn't even think about that when they said, okay, it's all good. Um, go ahead.
Well, so one of the things that you're going to see, again, the diversity and the reach of PSC going all the way up to Watkins County, down into Lewis County. And one of the things that is highlighted on this slide is the number of employees here. And one of the things that happens during storm response is that they're able to draw from the entire region that they operate in. And as you all know, it's pretty rare for storms to impact Watkins County in the same way as it does Thurston County, vice versa. So it has a breadth of, uh, and, and ability to deliver services by drawing on resources from across the utility, which is something that we don't oftentimes think about. But when you look at the numbers here, you're thinking, that's a pretty small utility, given the size and the diversity here within Thurston County. But you actually are able to, to draw on the resources from the entire utility up and down Puget Sound. So wanted to highlight that because I looked at the number, but it doesn't sound like a very large utility until you figure out the entire totality of the entire enterprise.
I know when they've had discussions in the past over creating our own public utilities, I mean, they'd never be able to compete with, just because of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Excellent point, Commissioner Edwards. All right, we go to the next slide. I just wanted to share, um, a picture of our mission and vision. And it's generally always been to provide safe, clean, and reliable energy for our customers. Um, with the focus really now moving into that clean component. Okay. So one of the main things we do here at PSC is, um, take care of storms and clean up afterwards and get the power back on for folks. So these are some of the things that we do on a year-round basis to prepare-
You said you were going to talk about CETA, but under your clean, you've got CETA and BNZC.
Beyond Net Zero, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, beyond net zero is, um, was our motto and continues to be. It means not only are we going to be, um, a clean energy company, we're going to work with other industries, especially like transportation and aviation, to get them to where they need to be as well.
And when's that going to happen? When's BN?
Twenty forty-five is, is like the great, great goal, right? That's what we're all trying to achieve.
Nuclear power in there?
Pardon me?
Nuclear power in there?
We're going to talk a little bit about that, yeah. I like your forward thinker. So these are some of the things that we do on a year-round basis to prepare for storms. It's one of our major things that we do. We have thirty-three-hundred employees, but about nine-hundred of them are actually called, um, onto duty every time we have a store, storm. Um, we do vegetation clearing. Everybody's been stopped on the road and, and have had to wait for the flaggers to let folks go by. Um, while we have Poteco out there and PSC cutting, um, vegetation, clearing limbs to make sure that the lines are not impacted when the wind blows. Um, we do a lot of pole replacements. We've got a really big project now out on Military Road. Um, and I did let Robin know about that. So Leonard, you're, you're, you've been updated. Um, big project on Military Road to replace utility poles and also do some undergrounding, um, and to cover some of the wires with, um, tree wire. It keeps the wires from shorting out. So that's, we're constantly looking at our system and looking at who's most vulnerable and then prioritizing the projects, um, by those numbers of outages.
And that's just an insulated wire, right?
Yes, exactly, exactly. We also do some meter upgrades, targeted reliability projects. That really is cable remediation, just replacing cable as needed and then undergrounding, um, our more vulnerable spots, like I mentioned. And then distribution automation, we're, um, increasing our technical capabilities. We used to have to go out and switch lines off manually when power went out to reroute it to other redundant lines. With distribution automation, we can actually have the folks in Bellevue do that with the flip of a switch. So we're, we're out there putting that in our system as well. So I get a lot of questions from folks about how we prioritize, um, our power, turning the power back on. And this slide talk shows a little bit about that hierarchy. So we're going to try to get the transmission lines back up first. Um, they are, are, they're critical, uh, because they, let's see, how do we say this? They are also how we get power from what, what's called our critical generation assets like dams, power plants, and wind farms. So those come first. And the second priority is substations. Um, they serve a great number of folks in a geographical area. So if they're out, um, we'll, we'll look at them second. And then finally, we'll look at our distribution systems and send our folks out to take care of those if they've been impacted by storms. Um, those are the lines that come off of substations and go out into the different neighborhoods. With all that said, though, there are other factors that play into how we prioritize, um, our restoration activities. Um, all of our emergency response coordinators, um, have a list of critical infrastructure. Um, so we know where all the hospitals are, we know where the regional airports are, water and wastewater treatment plants, sewage pumping stations. If we have any of those in the area, those come first so we can get those back online. Um, and the list also includes facilities from which people can't be easily relocated, like, um, nursing homes and assisted living facilities. So that is taken into account of when we look at our storm, um, restoration, um, prioritization. Any questions on storms? I know I send you guys a lot of emails, um, and I hope you're okay with that, but I try to keep folks updated on who's out, when we're, why we're out. Um, and I, I just wanted to just ask. Too many emails? Not enough emails?
I appreciate it. I've been at meetings when power's out somewhere and people are asking questions. I pull Christine's email and I'm like, wow, there's eighteen thousand customers.
I've always had to scratch my head because if you look at the outage map, four out of five times, it's like little dots here and there and all of Cooper Point. Which I happen to live there, so I noticed that. I'm just wondering, like, I mean, it's like the whole peninsula is out and then just like isolated little dots. And I'm just one, I just like couldn't quite figure it out. Maybe it's because we don't have nursing homes or, or-
You've got a main line going out there that's disabled.
Yeah, one-way.
And it always takes longer to do those pockets, right? Because they're probably down on our prioritization and it's, it's true, it's because you don't. Um, but yes, we're, we're aware of that. But we do pull in a lot of crews, um, from the north and they'll send folks down this way. Um, and sometimes we get hit up and down, you know, with the big storms, everybody's out, especially up north, Watkins County, Belingham. Um, we're very similar to them. We've got a lot of trees in Washington, so I think we have to pay a little bit of a price for the beautiful green. So, yes.
When, when you're, uh, going back to how you share, I guess, uh, if Tacoma Power runs into a big problem, do you guys have some kind of an interlocal agreement?
I don't know if we have an agreement, but I do know that we help out our fellow utilities across-
And then do they sometimes return the favor?
They do, absolutely. Yep, they do. So it really is, um, a, a coordinated effort. Um, and yeah, it, it's very, very friendly. So, yes, very much so. Okay, let's move on to the clean energy transformation. A lot of questions folks have. So this slide, it shows a quote from Mary Kip. She's our CEO and has been since two thousand nineteen. She actually came up from, I believe it was Arizona, um, because she wanted to be a part of this clean energy transformation. Um, and it's going to be, it's not going to be easy. So what is a clean energy transition? What, what is that all about? Well, it really means replacing reliable, dispatchable sources of energy that have traditionally provided baseload power such as coal and natural gas. We're going to have to get rid of those. We can't use coal and natural gas anymore. They are just not, uh, options for us to, um, use. So we're going to have to replace those.
Are you taking questions as we go on?
Yeah, you bet. So we're going to have to replace-
So I'm, I'm kind of curious. When you do and you make those determinations, do you have the real effect you have on the globe? And the reason I say that is India, Pakistan, Russia, China, they're putting a coal-fired plant on every day. And so as we change our power structure, what do we have? What kind of an effect do we have on the globe when we're going up against those kind of obstacles? Have you ever penciled that out, that we're going to change two percent, twenty percent? Uh, you ever done anything like that that'll show that we're really going to accomplish something? We're going to not just talk about it and feel good about it, but we're going to really have an accomplishment and maybe partnering with other utilities in the country. But how do we compare on usage and effect?
That's a good question. And I don't know if the company's sat down and thought about it on a global perspective, but I do know that we have, we have to meet our legal obligations to the state of Washington.
Sure.
On, on, you know, as a concept, I think you're right. I think if everybody was doing what we're doing and has set these aggressive climate goals, we would all be in much better shape. But that, you're right, that's not happening. Um, but from a company perspective, we have to focus on our requirements and what the state law tells us that we need to do. And so that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. You, you have to follow those, or you've got litigation going on. You know, but I'm, I'm still looking for the reality of success. I see Europe's going back to coal.
Right.
You know, because it's not working.
Right.
Okay, so what are we up against? How, how much are we gonna beat up our consumers to take away the sting, you might say, being created in Europe and other areas of the world?
The previous slide says it, when they say that, you know, the CEO says it's an existential threat. She's not saying that we're making strategic decisions, she's saying this is an existential threat that we're going to respond to.
I'm just curious.
So it's not, it's not, like, I don't know that PSC's looking at it from a perspective of, you know, a strategic move, they're saying...
Well, somebody ought to be able to tell the truth, that's all. All I'm looking for is the truth.
Right, and I think you would, you're gonna hear arguments on both sides, you know, the people who are very heavily involved in climate change activities are going to say, you have to start somewhere. And then you're gonna have the business community, which says we need inexpensive, you know, resources to start businesses, third world countries, how come they don't get to go use electricity like we did to develop the United States? So you're gonna have a lot of different arguments, and I think that those conversations will be had at a higher level, by the policymakers in Washington State and the United States. Yeah, I agree, it's a very complex issue, and they're great questions, and I don't have the answers.
Really, the bottom line is, there's no truth in there. That's the bottom line, when it comes right down to it. If you can't, if you can't give someone an answer that says 20%, 2%, I don't know, 40%? I don't know what the answer is, but I'd sure like to know, because as a policymaker, I get asked by constituents, you know, are we, are we really having an effect, are we just gonna feel good about it?
Well, we do track our greenhouse gas emissions.
I know, but in comparison to what's going on in the globe, because it isn't like the air quality recognizes a county line or a state line or an international line.
It may be a question that we should address with Representative Dillio.
Yeah, okay, I'm good. I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, I want the truth.
I agree, it's a real question, I totally agree, yeah. Let me make sure.
I wanted to highlight a single word that Christine just brought up here, and that is the replacement of reliable, which in my brain, that's on demand, and that's what coal and gas are, right? If you need the energy, you fire up the turbines and you run natural gas, you burn natural gas, it's been, and it's reliable, because you can use it on demand, and wind and solar is less reliable, meaning that you don't have the ability to control when you don't have it. So that's, this is why this is such difficult work, is you're replacing something that is on-demand, reliable, with something that is not as reliable or inconsistent, and it is gonna be a significant transformation from a technology standpoint, but also from a kind of how we go about thinking about citing things, planning for things, and using our electricity.
Nuclear fits in there too.
Right, right. But it's replacing, it's moving us off of something that's consistently reliable on demand.
Hydro's been pretty reliable.
High hydro, right, because you store the water behind the turbine, right? So it's the same thing with gas, but it's easier for me to think about it that way, that it's kind of on-demand, and then how do you store electricity, store power? So currently, it's stored in form of something you can burn or something that can spin a turbine.
Isn't there work towards storing wind and solar energy in ways that make it reliable and consistent?
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna need those battery energy storage systems, absolutely.
If we invested in those technologies, we would be that much closer to getting there.
But even that can be, more than batteries, it can be pumping the water up the hill and generating, you know...
But, you know, we'll get into this, but put your land use hat on, and as we start thinking about changing and transitioning from something that used to be reliable, you know, on-demand, to something that needs to be stored differently.
Yes.
The switch to something that is not as reliable and maybe technologies, you know, hasn't been driven there yet, there's also been like, like, rules passed, or like, there seems to be things where PSC is like creating laws where they can shut people's power off for like brownouts, or, you know, I know like, in wild, you know, wildfire situations, now PSC has the ability to shut the power off, and they're sending out letters to people during the summer saying, hey, you know, hmm, you know, you, looks like you're using a little too much power in the neighborhood, is there kind of a, is there a conversation within energy circles that say we need to kind of control power flow a little more?
Absolutely.
And there could be situations where we're shutting people off because the battery's low?
Well, we hope never to get to the situation where we're shutting people off, but we do see energy flowing differently in the future. It's no longer gonna be us providing energy, and you got, you know, the transmission lines will bring it, and everybody can just use it. Now it's going to be more of a conversation, like, like, hey, consumers, you know, here's our peak time, we're heading into a really hot time, we're gonna ask you to lower your thermostat, or we're gonna do it automatically and give you an incentive for allowing us to do that, so that we can reduce our consumption overall. Because we don't have large dispatchable resources anymore, we have the intermittent, the wind and the solar, we're gonna have to have more of a conversation with our customers. It's definitely gonna be more two-way than one-way.
And then, can I follow up? And then, you know, with intermittent supply and changing of supply and demand and things like that, how does that not drive prices up?
Good question. I think that the reality is that we are gonna have to make a lot of investments in green energy and renewable resources, that's just the reality of it, and costs are going to go up. That's just, consumer behavior is moving toward more electrification, the laws that have been passed, which I'll get to, are requiring, you know, commercial buildings to go, to be more all-electric, to be more efficient, everything is pointing in that direction, and we need to make a lot of investments to get us there, because the grid was never built to support that kind of demand, it just wasn't, so.
Christine has a slide coming up on the, kind of the regulatory environment in which PSC has to operate, so he'll help answer some of those questions.
Carolina, did you have a question?
I have two, and one was brought just from something, the first one was kind of a follow-up to his question, something you said, right, getting those messages out. There was something in the winter where the system went down, and, you know, I was receiving messages, do not use, you know, turn it down during these peak hours. Did that work? Did you see that consumers were, like, were doing it, or was it, you know? I, I remember one night, I completely forgot about it, and I was like doing my laundry in my dishwasher, and then halfway through, I was like, oh crap, right? But did, did you feel the messaging worked?
We did, we did see a reduction in our power usage by our consumers, which we were very thankful for. That was the Jackson Prairie incident, we've got a natural gas reservoir down in Lewis County, Jackson Prairie, and we had some issues with some freezing, I think they're called jukeboxes, that expanded and broke, and they had to be replaced, so our natural gas supply, two facilities that burn natural gas to create electricity, that was compromised. And so a decision was made to send out a request, and they did respond, and we're very thankful. And that's, I think that's just the start, that shows, this is gonna be a two-way conversation between us and our consumers, not just us providing energy in the future and working more closely in partnerships with our customers and our businesses. It's not just gonna be like it used to, it just can't be if we wanna move toward a clean energy future, but really good question, it did work. You had another one?
Yes, and my second question was in regards to, as we're moving towards this path of electrification and it's putting, you know, like, I feel like the infrastructure's not fully there for kind of this path that we're taking now, is there gonna be more incentives for homeowners to maybe go the solar panel way, or, you know, is there gonna be more partnerships with, with homeowners to go that route, more incentives for homeowners to go that route, that way? The, you know, it's reduced in another way while, you know, kind of to balance it out.
Yeah, we are definitely incentivizing our customers to move toward electrification, and that's not easy. It costs a lot of money for people to switch from natural gas to electric heat pumps, et cetera. But one of the, one of our key messages is that conserving energy is the best and cheapest way that we have now to keep from building more transmission lines. If you conserve, you get more bang for your buck. But, but definitely, we are going to be doing more incentives, and the company, which is really gonna focus around equity issues, which we haven't done in the past, but we're required to now by law, we're gonna actually look at named communities and folks who have been left out of those conversations and try to focus on them, to get them where they need to be with electrification first. And so that's an interesting move for the company, we've got an equity advisory group that's working on that, but there will be more incentives coming out for folks to electrify, but it's costly. Again, there's a price tag to going in that direction.
So you're monitoring every individual's use, and then you're incentivizing and rewarding people for using less, kind of? Do you publish people's energy use?
No, we don't.
Oh, you report it to them, though?
Yes.
In relation to their neighbors, right?
Yes, exactly, but it is private, yes.
So, so Carolina would get a message that says you're using more power than your neighbors?
Right, right, I was so proud this last summer, they asked us to conserve energy, and it was during our heat spell, right? And so I work for the company, so I'm like, I gotta look good here, and so I shut everything off, I powered up my computer, and between four and six, I went outside and worked on my computer. I won, I just totally smacked my whole neighbors, or I had like no usage, it was like, it's just one of those moments, I was like, woo-hoo! Even showed my boss, so, and I'm new to the company, so I'm still racking up points.
Like a social credit score type system?
But, yeah, so there are gonna be other incentives, we're actually gonna incentivize people by lowering their bills for doing that kind of stuff, so we're working on a lot of programs, yes, with less painful.
Kind of like your credit score?
Yeah!
Your energy score?
Exactly.
Well, social credit score, there's countries that do that kind of thing, and it scares the daylights out of them.
Conservation piece is definitely, we saw it work with Lot, right? We encourage, I mean, that's why you have the wet center, right? It's intended to encourage conservation, so that you don't have to build as much capacity at the treatment plant, and it worked 20 years ago, right? To be able to demonstrate, and we were able to see a reduction in water consumption, reducing the need to build additional treatment plant capacity. So we know conservation works, we know that it is a cheaper alternative in the long run than having to overbuild infrastructure. So we know it works here in Thurston County.
Solar panels for homeowners, you know, is, I know PSC works with different companies around, is that kind of the route that PSC like is also trying to incentivize homeowners to go?
We are not in the business, or we are not allowed to be in the business of putting in solar panels. We do recommend good solar providers to our customers if they're interested, but the UTC has prohibited us from actually being solar installers ourselves. We can put in like community solar on municipal buildings and then share that clean energy with our customers. But we encourage our customers to go solar, Washington's not the best state for solar, but the more of us that are doing it, the more energy we'll be conserving. I do believe that we're seeing our customers add about three megawatts of solar every month, and they have been, so people are doing it, which is great, because it's another clean energy source, so.
When I looked into solar for my house, it wasn't the lack of sunlight, it was the amount of trees around my house, and it was like, there was even just one power line crossing, and, well, it was one power line.
That's a dilemma.
Because all those cells, it knocked them out as the sun led that one power line across the cell, the solar panels, and they're like, huh, tree, power line, can't do it.
I have more slides to get through, and I wanna respect your time, I've only got 15 minutes or so, so I'm gonna speed this up a little bit. So this, this slide right here shows our current fuel mix, and what fuel mix means, this is what we burn to create electricity right now, it doesn't include the natural gas customers. So we've got about 23% coal, we've got hydroelectric natural gas, so that's where we are today, and this is where we need to go. God, you're good. Right now, we're, in 2020, we were at 42% non-emitting, and the orange was emitting, and this is where we need to be by 2030, which is one of our next steps. We need to be at 80% carbon neutral by 2030.
2030, you think that's real, that's not realistic.
It's a lot of work. You know what, we're on target to meet our 2030 goals, Commissioner, we are. 2045 is a little more iffy, but we're not alone in that, nobody's meeting that 2045 goal. We need something in the technological world to create that baseline energy that, it's just, we're looking at nuclear, we're investing in nuclear, it doesn't pencil out yet, but we've got our hopes that technology is gonna help us get there by 2045. So this is a slide that talks about the Clean Energy Transformation Act, all the different laws that were passed from 2019 on. Washington has enacted some of the most aggressive clean energy climate change policies in the nation, and we're working very hard to comply. 2019 was CETA, and that was all about the electricity supply, and they gave us several goals, which I'll get into in the next slide. The Climate Commitment Act, which passed in 2021, which may be repealed by voters this November, we shall see, was all about reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our natural gas components. Clean fuel standard, that's really a DOL thing, that's the transportation sector, they've gotta meet certain clean fuel standards. And then the Clean Buildings Act that I touched on briefly requires the new energy performance standards for existing commercial buildings. We have a program that helps all of our customers do that for free, if anyone's interested.
So it's the same sort of box that all municipalities find themselves in, in terms of the environment, right? You have a regulatory environment that you're constrained and have to operate it within, you have a rate environment that you're constrained and you have to operate within, and Puget Town Energy is governed, their rates are governed by the Utility and Transportation Commission, and then you have consumer demand acceptance portion boxing unit, so they, just, just like Lot, just like any other municipality, they have a pretty tight playing field in which to operate in, in order to achieve this, and they can't, you know, I used to say a lot, it's just money, right? You could build your way out of anything, but the ratepayers won't tolerate that. So it's a pretty interesting...
Quite a balance.
Balance that they have to walk, and so they share a lot of the challenges that anyone that has a utility has to, has to be able to balance.
So I put this slide in right here after the fact, I'm not quite ready to talk about it, so let's bop on to the other one, which just kind of, these are the major provisions of CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act. We've got three major deadline dates, we've got December 31, 2025, which is fast approaching, we gotta be out of coal by then, and we're gonna do that. Trans Alta and some whole folks in Montana, we're supplying that, we're out of that. So come January 1, 2026, done, we're gonna flip the switch, that'll be an interesting day for PSC.
Okay, if you don't get there, what happens?
We're not gonna turn the lights off, yeah, we're just, it's just not gonna happen, so if we don't get there, we'll have to regroup with policymakers and see what they wanna do, because if their idea is, you know, just to penalize, you know, companies for not meeting their goals, where are those costs gonna go? Where are those costs gonna go? They're not gonna go, we're gonna pass them along.
You brought up equity, and...
Yes, exactly.
I mean, it's there, but who's gonna get penalized if this doesn't work?
Exactly, and you're gonna hurt the low-income customers.
People with an income, maybe your upper income, people are gonna go buy a generator, you know?
Right, exactly.
And those other folks are not.
We're having those conversations.
And boy, that's gonna cost some grief.
Yep, we are having those conversations. It's not, it's a very complex issue, it's not easy. Our next big date is January 1, 2030, we've gotta be carbon neutral, we think we can meet that, and then the date after that is January 1, 2045, 100% non-emitting for electricity supply. There were some other provisions in that legislation, and we talked a little about that equity, I wanted to make sure we highlight that, because that's new for the company, and we've got a great equity advisory group, and they're moving along on that. Did you wanna say something? No? Okay. The next slide shows how much we need, I mean, this slide is really, this is, we need a lot of, to add a lot of clean energy and fast, essentially. Some of our challenges, is the UTC gonna allow us to increase rates to what they need to be in order to invest in all these capital projects for clean energy production? Permitting issues, we've run into that in a couple of different sites. We tried to build a 10-mile transmission line, I think it was up in east, eastern King County, and it was, it was a 10-mile line, I believe, and it took 20 years to get through all the lawsuits and the seat bill requirements, and so hopefully, we won't have a lot of those problems, because if that's the case, we're not gonna meet our goals. Public resistance to projects in their neighborhood, nobody wants to look at those transmission lines or have that battery energy storage system, you know, in their backyard, so we're being very thoughtful about where we're gonna place those and what that looks like, but we can get some public resistance, and that will, that will be a challenge to meet our goals.
Just real, real clear, I know you're jammed up, but what legislation is on the ballot this fall that could affect this?
The Initiative Process got enough signatures to repeal the Climate Commitment Act.
Is that the one you're working on?
No, not this one, the greenhouse gas, so...
It won't affect this?
No, this is still, this is not on the ballot. And then, one of the, one of our newest challenges, which is something that's unusual, we've got non-energy entities vying for clean energy as well, we should just be competing to buy from utilities, other utilities, now we've got, you know, Amazon, Google, Microsoft, they all want to be the clean energy and have that mode come on their advertising place, so we're competing with them now, which is making this a very interesting place to, to work. Interesting times. So Gary, this is the slide that I think you'll have an interest in, it shows our integrated resource plan. And so the Utilities and Transportation Commission requires us to do this kind of full... And so the Utilities and Transportation Commission requires us to do this kind of forward-thinking, this outlook. We have a twenty-year plan, we have a four-year plan, and we have a two-year plan, which updates the four-year plan every two years. And we have a separate gas one and a separate electricity one. That's a lot of planning work, that's a lot of reports that go to the UTC. But we are looking at the future constantly to see what, where the needs are. And I keep hearing the same thing from the folks at PSC, is the more information we have from our communities, the better we can plan, if we know what's coming in, like the big casino that's gonna be out in Lacey. We're aware of that now, we're thinking about that. The more information we have, the better we can plan, but this is a snapshot in time. It's, it shows, you know, the outlook to twenty forty-five, I believe. And the key, the key thing I wanted to bring home with this slide is the difference. You see the supply, and then you see the need, and there's a gap there. So how are we gonna fill that gap? The IRP plan only looks at available technology today, so that's why the gap is so big. So hopefully, as we bring in hydrogen and potentially nuclear, we're gonna close that gap.
What is the solid line versus the dotted line?
I knew someone was gonna ask me that. I think the solid line is peak capacity, and the dotted line is normal use. But I can confirm that, because I looked at that last night, and I'm like.
It says it on the.
I know, but it doesn't make sense to me.
I still don't understand what it's saying.
Right, I'll circle back, Ty with you, because I had the same question on that as well. And I also wanted to know why there was a decrease in wind.
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
And I did get an answer to that, that is because some of, this is like a snapshot in time, and some of our contracts for wind and solar were going away. We're gonna renew those, but you can't take that into consideration when you're doing that kind of planning. So that's the answer to that question. Okay, we've got about eight minutes left. I must really like pictures of wind turbines, because we really have talked about all of those issues and bullet points up there, so I'm gonna scooch right along. Natural gas, this is an interesting, this is the one that will be impacted if we do get a repeal of that in the fall. How are we working to decrease our greenhouse gas emissions? The slide shows that we're leveraging conservation, we're trying to look at technology that keeps leaks from happening. We're looking at renewable natural gas, which is about three percent of our energy electric burning supply. That's like from anaerobic digesters and landfills, it takes, it captures the methane, it comes off of that as they decompose, and we use that. And targeted electrification, we've got a couple pilots out there right now where we're asking folks, Puget Sound Energy customers, we'll come in and we'll do an energy assessment for you, and we'll tell you how much it's going to cost, we've got that pilot program running now. And I think it was only for ten thousand homes, we haven't quite had the interest to meet that ten thousand. The next thing we're gonna do is take that same targeted education pilot program, and like I mentioned before, we're gonna take it into our vulnerable communities, our undeemed communities, and provide it there, and just reducing methane emissions from our own operations. So this is the, one of the, this is some information that I kind of alluded to when we were looking at the map of the different colors. So something to keep in mind, on a cold winter's day, our gas system, natural gas, it, it keeps people warm, it keeps most of our customers warm. So on a cold winter's day, the gas system provides more than two times the energy provided by the electric system. And so that's important to keep in mind. How do we transition away from that much power and warmth for our customers in a short amount of time? There's a lot of tension between those two factors. Definitely not, easier said than done, right? But we are working very, very hard to get there.
I did this assessment you're talking about?
Yeah.
And they, does this connect to, they were saying, like, I have a heat pump, but it's an older kind of heat pump, and the new ones are able to go down to like zero or five degrees to where they are creating that efficient. Like, I think if we transition to the newer technology, that gap won't be true. That gas systems are creating double the energy of the electric. It's just that the, the electric systems weren't designed for that type of.
Right.
For that type of.
Because if it gets so cold, they stop working, right?
Yeah.
Right, or, I've also heard some of, like, some of the newer heat pumps, if you get to that point where it's like between thirty-two and thirty-five degrees, and the newer heat pumps turn on, they're operating at a high energy use. I mean, it just doesn't make sense, so we're trying to find that balance. But you're right, that is the pilot program, because I'm gonna have that done, my place do have them come out. Because my house is pretty much all natural gas, and I'm out in Tumwater.
As you guys transition from natural gas, do you see a lot of people just picking up propane instead?
I don't know, I haven't.
We've never had natural gas where I live, and everybody has propane tanks at their house.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, that's a good question, so I haven't thought of that.
But Ty, to your point, the market and the industry is, are quickly adapting, right? So if natural gas is not an option, they're finding new ways to make heat pumps more efficient so they can operate at lower temperatures. Ranges are changing dramatically from the old element.
But the science told me allows you to go solo.
Yeah, yeah, in the end, it's still physics at the end of the day that limits.
I think it's five degrees that it was, it would be effective at.
But there's, but the point being though, that the market is adjusting and adapting to changes in regulation for the consumer as well.
All right, I've got four minutes left. I've kind of touched base on this already, energy affordability, we have a lot of bill pay programs, because this really is, it's expensive, it's gonna impact a lot of our lower-income taxpayers. And we're continuing, looking at how to increase our bill pay support and help. There are a lot of payment programs out there that will help our customer in their unique situations. So this is something that we're continually looking at. And the last is my last slide besides the thank you and questions slide. So these are three major areas that are part of our plan moving forward. Distributed energy resources and microgrids, we're building one in Tonino and Buquota. Tonino's gonna have a solar panel, battery storage system, and that's going to power the high school and their emergency coordination efforts.
You're already doing the high school stuff now, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, they've got the solar on there, but we're adding battery to that, so it'll be, it's only a little microgrid, and Buquota's going to get a battery as well out in their area. That's going to be able to power about two hundred homes and keep them on, on, up and running with power. It was one of our harder-hit areas, a lot of trees out in that area. So we are building that and working on that. We are, like Doug mentioned, we are going to be looking for partners to cite battery energy storage systems. And not just these small-scale ones like in Tonino, which is our, about one megawatt to two megawatts. We're looking to place utility scale, so.
What about out at our landfill, aren't you doing something out there?
Yeah, I think we're doing a solar thing, yeah.
Yeah, solar.
Solar panels are being put up out there as well, we're excited about that. So those are some of the things that we're doing locally, and, let's see, demand response, we kind of talked a little bit about that, some of our flex programs, if you get a smart meter and wanna participate, we will turn your meter down for you, which at any time you can tell us not to. Or you, and we'll incentivize you to do that. Again, more of a relationship with our customers than we have had in the past. And then finally, transportation electrification, we have a lot of programs that we are running. We just started a pole charging incentive program, Yelm is taking advantage of that, where we're gonna do pole charging on existing poles. We've got residential charging incentives, so if you're a resident, we'll incentivize you to put in an EV charger, multifamily charging, I think Olympia and Tumwater are taking advantage of some of the incentives we offer and stacking them with some incentives from the Department of Commerce. A lot of workplace and fleet charging programs that we have as well. And we all, we're changing our public charging incentives as well to be less restrictive and be a little bit easier to work with. So we have a lot of weatherization, tons of incentives that we offer businesses and homes for conservation. So that is it, that is PSC, and is Emily listening? So, hi, wait, hi, new folks, so anyway, thank you.
Is your clothes, I saw you unmute.
Oh yeah, I was just gonna say I'm here and I appreciate the presentation. This was super informative, so thank you.
So thanks, Emily. Any other questions? We have one minute.
How, how much energy or resources are going into hydrogen and nuclear?
A lot of, a lot of resources are going into nuclear, we just gave ten million dollars to a company, and I can't remember the name, in eastern Washington, so that they can look at putting in a small modular reactor. What's good about the new nuculars is that they're scalable, they're about eighty megawatts apiece. The technology is very safe, it's very clean, it's not your mom's.
We use it on nuclear ships all the time, you know.
Absolutely, I think France.
Our most precious economy, is our youth, you know, and so.
I think France gets about seventy percent of their energy from nuclear. So it is, it is definitely something we're looking at, because it's a great, you can turn it on and off quickly, it's great.
So when you said it wasn't penciling out, is that like, just because it's so expensive to build?
Right now, yes, and same with hydrogen, that if the Department of Energy, we're part of the hub down in Centralia, we're, we plan on building a peaker facility, where we're gonna take hydrogen and burn that at peak times. It's only gonna be on from four to six and eight to ten, and we're gonna burn the hydrogen, that's what a peaker plant is. But it's expensive, hydrogen is very expensive.
During your off times though, can't you use the excess electricity to make hydrogen?
Yeah.
Now, isn't that kind of in the works as well?
Yeah, and it takes a lot of electricity to split that water into hydrogen and.
But it saves it, and better batteries, I think, but why isn't it?
We are looking at hydrogen, we're looking, we're open to anything, we've got RFPs out for new technologies. We're actually looking at something called, I think it's called iron rust. It's a new, new type of battery, and I don't know all the details of it, there's, there's a lot of different things we're looking at.
Like an iron oxide deal or something?
You know, I just, as we close and add, I just wanna relay my experience with the company. So my first interaction with them politically was back in two thousand, when I first ran for office. And it was a very different company back then than it is now. And I've been really impressed with how open they are to exploring kind of different things. And so I have the same questions that you do, what about nuclear? And they said, oh, well, we're exploring this, and we wanted to see if this will work. They're partnering with others to explore different ways of creating more reliable, but carbon-neutral energy. And it's all a very different company today than it was twenty-five years ago, and definitely different than it was even ten years ago. So I, I think that from a consumer standpoint, we should feel good that they are operating within the environment that the legislature has created for them, and the clean energy goals. And everything seems to be pointing to the fact that they're doing best level of effort in order to achieve those goals. But it will take a different way of interacting with the company, because as you just saw, a lot of this stuff occurs on the ground in our backyard. And that's really what's gonna change for policymakers at the local level. Because in the old days, you know, maybe you do a, you do a substation and a new development, and that was kind of it. You'd kind of worry about your ride-away stuff. But now you're gonna have to figure out how to put commercial batteries where you have population, because you just can't put them far away, because distance matters. And so we're gonna run up against those complaints of those constituents.
Not in my backyard, type thing.
In my backyard, and it's all moving us forward toward this clean energy goal and transition. And it's gonna be a lot of work, and it's gonna take a lot of communication and a lot of effort on all of our parts in order to make that happen. And so you're a critical part of it, because of the leadership role that you play, because of the land use decisions that you make moving forward. So we just want you to be mindful of that, we're gonna be talking to you a lot as this moves forward, so get used to us.
Well, you know, I think as we eliminate gas, as we eliminate, as we require, you know, electric, and as we deal with growth during this whole period of time, I mean, it's gonna be a challenge to get there.
Agreed.
You know, and then I, I really think the truth is a big, the biggest thing we could do to involve the public is tell them the truth. Because it's just like the vaccine business that went on a couple of years ago. Now you got people that are, they're afraid of the regular flu shot, you know. So I think there's a correlation there.
So one of the things I think we can do as a follow-up is, you kind of touched on House Bill fifteen eighty-nine, which is just passed, Representative D'Leo was the prime sponsor. And so we have somebody in our own backyard that can help us walk through the requirements associated with the changes around natural gas and the constraints and incentives it creates for the company. So that would be a good thing for us to follow up on. And I do think that some of the misinformation that you're hearing about, oh, PSC's not gonna provide natural gas anymore, all that stuff, which isn't true. We need to be able to communicate that clearly with customers and with you, so that you can communicate clearly around those expectations with constituents. And Beth is gonna have to have the same sort of response and information as well. So it's nice that we have all that locally here, and we can get that to you.
You had that slide, and it said.
I for S, I, Doug, I forgot to go back to it, yeah.
It's not taking away, it's not a ban on natural gas, so what was, what is fifteen eighty, what does it do?
It allows us to combine the gas and the electric IRP plans together, which is huge, you know, weight off our shoulders.
What's IRP?
Reporting, in the Integrated Resource Plan.
Okay.
So that every two, four, and twenty years, that, it combines those two. It sets up a approval system through the UTC, and I can't remember them. Back, 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 there we go. A certificate of public convenience and necessity. We used to engage, we used to go out and build capital projects, not knowing whether or not the UTC was going to allow us to include them in our rates. With this process, they're gonna take a look at it before you even start, and then when it finishes, so that these projects are certified. Construction work in progress historically, utilities have not been allowed to include any costs for big capital projects until after they were done and put in use in their rates. This is going to allow us to kind of chunk that out and add the costs to building these new infrastructure projects to the rates at a gradual rate as opposed to boom all at once. So that's very important for us, the CWIP. And the accelerated depreciation as we remove, get more and more away from gas, it allows us to increase the amount that we can depreciate and include that into our rates so that it gets paid for, all the infrastructure that we have done. So those are the main provisions. It did start off, the bill did start off with not allowing us to add new natural gas hookups. That was taken out of the bill, the State Building Code Council gets us there anyway with their new laws that went into effect in March this year, so, lot going on, lot going on.
So bottom line, the kicker, this is, I mean, I hear this as well.
It's all Ty's fault, and it all comes down to Ty.
But it does not include a ban on natural gas, and it does not change PSC's obligation to serve natural gas customers.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, all comes down to Ty.
Sounds like there's good things in there to help you with.
It's, it was a planning bill, yes, it was a good bill, so. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for letting the old commissioner sit in on your.
You bet, it was a pleasure to meet you and chat with you, so thank you for your time. Thank you, Doug, for coming, appreciate it.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you, Leonard, thank you. Sorry to run, we're eight minutes over, sorry.
It's okay, anything to convince us before we adjourn?
Didn't convince me yet that we're there, we got a good concept, we just don't have a plan.
Twelve oh eight, we are adjourned.